We do have seven o'clock. I would like to call the March 6 meeting of the Person Board of County Commissioners to order at this time, recognize that we do have a quorum, and ask Commissioner Sims to lead us in an invocation, and Commissioner Palmer would lead our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Courtney. If we're less prepared. The only followers thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We ask that you would lead us and guide us as we go through our county commissioners' meeting and help us to make wise decisions for our county. We lift up our law enforcement, pray for them, we pray for their safety. We pray for our country, our county, as we go through the difficult times, and we just pray that you will bring comfort to us. And Lord, we just thank you for the many blessings that you give us, and thank you that for allowing us, again, to be in a free country. And as we go forth, give us safe travels as we leave here tonight. These things we pray you in the heavenly name. Amen.
All those who participate on raising your flag, hats removed, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, two republics, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First on our agenda is discussion adjustment, approval of the agenda as presented with one addition. Our attorney would like to add a closed session to the agenda for attorney-client privilege. Do you have a motion?
Some move.
A motion to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carried. First on our agenda tonight, item number one is rezoning, map amendment application requested by Tim Godwin. So I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Some move.
A motion to open the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carried. Mr. Bowley, you're up.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. Chairman, Chris Bowley, Planning Director. Well, it's already up for me. Thank you. Tonight, we have Project RZ-0122. The application started last year, that's why it received the 22 number, but it's a rezoning application for 4.28 acres at the intersection of Dink Ashley Road and Antioch Church Road, southwest corner. Subject property is located at the aforementioned, has two zoning designations on it, R Residential and GI General Industrial. Zoning amendment request is to rezone 3.12 acres GI to match the zoning, which already exists on the 1.16 acres R. Makes the R zoning boundary match the property boundary of the entire 4.2 acres. It allows the lot to become what they call legally conforming for residential home development. This lot is not a flag lot, as it doesn't have quote-unquote "the flag pole" as listed in our code for section 53-9. And the planning board voted unanimously 7-0 recommending approval of RZ-0122. Here is a location map slash aerial photo, and you can see Antioch Baptist Church Road, or Baptist Church itself, just to the north. And the little historical marker is to the right in the image, in the community of AI. And there's an easement which leads out from that 4.28 acres out to the main road for access potential. This is the future land use map, is in our adopted comprehensive plan as of 2021 showing rural for this community. And the R zoning designation is consistent and compatible with that comprehensive plan designation. This shows the existing zoning, official zoning map for the county, which shows the bisecting of the GI to the southern part and the residential to the northern part, creating the need to be here. This is what the official zoning map would look like pending approval tonight by you, when we make adjustment to the map. So the guiding principles in our comprehensive plan, which we by state law must adhere to, we have to be consistent with, the zoning amendment has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And we have listed guiding principles in the comprehensive plan that were adopted by you, and these three most apply, which is principle 1.5 to provide enhanced services for rural communities, principle 2.6 provide an attractive and diverse housing stock to attract workers at all levels, principle 4.1 to develop coordinated approach to utility service extensions should the county does not have a growth boundary, but that designation of growth is the closest we come to an urban growth boundary, and this is within that. So I always tend to put up a potential motion for you, but I did provide that as the last slide here, and we'll open this up to any questions. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up speaking in favor of this?
Yes, sir. The only one signing up is the applicant, Mr. Tim Godwin.
Just wanted to give you all a little background. From where I'm coming from, I know I initially had a little kickback. Some people were possibly worried about me buying the acreage back there. And I just wanted to follow through with, I'm not looking at any big stuff. I want to build a house for me and my family to live in, something I can give my youngins when I'm dead and gone. They've got a nice place in Timberlake area to live in. And I just put my name on there just in case I needed to ask any questions or answer any questions. So if you don't have anything for me, that's all I needed to say.
I think you made it perfectly clear.
Any questions? Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone speaking in opposition?
No, sir.
We have a motion to come out of close, out of a public hearing.
Some move.
A motion to come out of public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carried. Item number, item number two is consideration to grant or deny the request.
Mr. Chairman, if the board wishes to grant the request, the proper motion is at the bottom of page five in your agenda package. The agenda abstract that Mr. Bowley mentioned, and that motion is written, satisfies the statutory requirements.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I hereby move to adopt the rezoning zoning map application, RZ-0122, and find that it is consistent with the adoption of Person County City of Roxborough Joint Comprehensive Land Use Plan, specifically guided principle 1.5 to provide enhanced service for rural communities, guided principle 2.6 to provide an attractive and diverse housing stock to attract workers to at all levels, and guided principle 4.1 to develop a coordinated approach to utility service extensions.
Sir, we have a motion on the floor. End of discussion. Here is none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carried. And item number three on the agenda is another public hearing, petition SUP-0223, a request by applicant Adam Richard Osborne, the property owner. So we all go right ahead. Mr. Bowley.
Is this one we need to swear in first?
Mr. Chairman, did you all vote to?
Motion to go into a public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Yeah, we have a motion to open the public hearing. End of discussion. You're none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carried. Now we're legal.
And it is now time to swear in the witnesses. And let me make, Mr. Chairman, if I may, my usual statement at the beginning of one of these special use permit hearings. This is a different sort of procedure. The action the board took on the first item was a legislative action. This one is not. This is another special use permit hearing. It is quasi-judicial. The board really, in this case, is acting more like a court. It's more judicial than a legislative decision. And what that means is, the board already has made the legislative decision that commercial storage units in this zoning district are appropriate if, but only if, the evidence in this public hearing shows that the four criteria that are listed in the plan and ordinance are satisfied. Testimony will be under oath, and the board's task is to consider the testimony and the other evidence and make those findings a fact and vote on the issuance of the permit. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Chris Bowley, Planning Director, again.
Yeah, we need to swear in the...
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Yes. So Chairman Powell will proceed. We'll ask Mr. Bowley as well as Mr. Osborne to come forward to be sworn in. So if you would put your... Chairman, we'll lead you.
Okay. And if you will, repeat after me. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Chris Bowley.
Aye, Adam Osborne.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will tell the truth?
Tell the truth.
The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
The whole truth and nothing but the truth.
As testimony offered in the public hearing?
As testimony offered in a public hearing.
Or petition SUP?
Or petition SUP?
O223.
233.
A request by the applicant, Adam Richard Osborne.
A request by the applicant, Adam Richard Osborne.
Property owner of plus or minus 3.33 acres.
Property owner of plus or minus 3.33 acres.
Located at tax, map, and parcel.
Located at tax, map, and parcel.
Number A84A.
Number A84A.
C1.
C1.
C2.
C2.
C3.
C3.
C4.
C4.
A27.
A27.
And A28.
A28.
To approve special use permit in a B2.
To approve special use permit in a B2.
Neighborhood shopping.
Neighborhood shopping.
Zoning district for a commercial storage facility.
Zoning district for a commercial storage facility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Bowley, if you will introduce the request, please.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Chris Bowley, Planning Director. So as you know, this is SUP-0223, second special use permit application we've reviewed this year. Subject property we mentioned is 3.33 acres of a larger tract, which is not included in this application. That's why we're only focusing on the 3.33 acres. The proposed commercial storage facility is the proposed use inside of a B2 zoning district, which is fairly symmetrical on both sides of Oxford Road. This is at the intersection of Pixley-Pritchard Road and Oxford Road, on the south side of Oxford Road. Storage units are mutually supportive for residential uses in close proximity. Housing is what would be considered very low density or very rural in nature, but nonetheless, these demands for more urban uses would be similarly situated or properly located inside of a B2 zoning district. And these proposed storage units would serve the residential uses out there. There is, as far as I know, and the applicant can testify to this, it's a low traffic generating land use. I don't believe they will have an office out there, but they may, with few overhead and parking spaces. Here's the general map, and just off to the north is Pixley-Pritchard Road. You can't really see it from here. This is a good time to address the utility easement, which is bisecting the property as well, as you can see on that. That is for a gas line easement, which has existed for quite some time, and lots of structures have been built over, over the years. Please note, especially on this exhibit, that outside of this application, there needs to be a recombination plat for this property that would remove those lot lines into unified tract at the time. The applicant may vacate that portion of the internal roadways, which they have every right to do, to petition for it, but those internal roadways shown here are public, as platted originally. Here's an aerial photo. The property's since been cleared some time ago. This is the future land use map showing the future land use designation for the property is rural. And here is the existing zoning map, the official zoning map, and you can see the purple and the P2 zoning district, which is on both sides of Oxford Road, so it's fairly symmetrical with good commercial depth. This is currently the proposed site plan, but subject to change, obviously, as they do a recombination for the lots, and whether they petition to vacate the public rights away, and whether they choose to add stormwater and access points and move the buildings, et cetera. So this is preliminary, and it says so in the bottom right-hand corner of your exhibit, but it had to be included in the application. So this is what differs for an SUP application, and that there needs to be a test of finding a fact, and I'll read them and the test as well. That the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located, were proposed, and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved. The proposed use of commercial storage units is considered a low traffic generating land use and more passive than active commercial uses. That the use meets all required conditions and specifications. The proposed Exhibit E site plan provides project details to determine conditions and specifications. An initial review indicates that the proposed project meets the B2 zoning district's purpose and intent and dimensional criteria. That the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or that the use is a public necessity. The proposed use, excuse me, will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. This commercial development as a more passive commercial use should not diminish residual property values in the area, meaning they will stay static or maybe even go up. The proposed use is mutually supportive of area residential uses that do not have storage capacity. Many of the homes out here have carports, and serves a purpose, a purpose near residential uses. The proposed use is not a public necessity. That the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with the comprehensive plan. The proposed use as one-story buildings will be, in keeping with the commercial uses, accessory buildings, workshops, and barns within the area, as previously addressed. The proposed use is also in conformance with the county's comprehensive plan, and that meets state law. Based on the above, staff recommends approval of SUP-0223 for the Osborne storage facility with the following conditions and potential motion which I provide to you if you so choose to read it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions about Mr. Bowley at this point? Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have speakers speaking in favor of this project?
Yes, the applicant, Mr. Adam Osborne, has signed up to speak.
Good evening.
This is a fast-developing area, I feel, and will be a need in the future for the residents. If I should elaborate or not?
I could, sure.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
How many, how many storage units, and what sizes are you thinking of putting out there?
Initially, it's going to be three buildings, 9,000 square foot total, but it will be varying sizes from five by five to 10 by 20.
Well, I just know there is some development, as you know, not far from there, and I'm sure as people move in, they're going to need somewhere to store extra stuff that's not going to go in the garage or in the house or whatever. But anyway, I think that's a good idea. That's a good opportunity for business. So, but that was my question. That's one. Are you going to fence it in? Would you be putting fence around it for security?
That is the plan.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, good. Is that fence required?
No.
No.
I didn't, I didn't think so, yeah, but, but good. I think, my opinion, that's not worth anything. Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone speaking in opposition?
No, sir.
Motion to come out of the public hearing.
Some move.
Have a motion come out of public hearing. End of discussion. You're none. All in favor of the, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carried. Item number four would be consideration to grant or deny the request. We have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. Chairman Powell, to approve this storage unit facility.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to use the language on page 52 for that motion?
Yeah, I couldn't find that one on my sheet, so yes.
Chairman, you need to, let me, if I may, if the board wishes to approve this requested special use permit, may I suggest the following motion. Move that the board make the four findings of fact as recommended in the agenda abstract, and grant the special use permit with the recommended, three recommended conditions stated in the agenda abstract. And we'll pass that along to the clerk.
I don't remember half of that.
That's exactly what you said.
I thought that, I thought you said just, just that.
Well, it was, but in roundabout terms. Motion is to...
Motion on the floor, end of discussion, all that motion. You're none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, motion carried. Thank you, sir. At this point, in our commissioners' meeting, we do have 10 minutes set aside for public comment that allows our citizens to come and express any concerns they may have related to county business. And just reminding everyone that you have, we have 10 minutes set aside. If we have more than one speaker, that time will be divided by those. And so we'll ask now if we have anyone signed up for public comment.
Yes, sir. We do have one speaker, Mr. Roger Faulkner of Timberlake.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Commissioners. My name's Roger Faulkner. I live in Timberlake. Haven't lived there too long, but we do have a little problem out there. We have someone that is shooting their guns outdoors, very close to our homes. And I know Wake County recently approved a new shooting ordinance. They updated it to make the distance a little further from homes. I've spoken with my neighbors, and each one of them tells me they have all had incidents of bullets hitting their house or near their house in the last couple of years. No one's ever been hit, but it could happen as the neighborhoods start filling in in the rural area. So I'm asking if Person County could at least adopt the same rules that Wake County recently adopted. And look into it and see if it's possible.
We'll, we'll do, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five on the agenda is motion needed to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Some move.
Have a motion to approve. End of discussion. You're none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carried. Item number six, new business, Child Advocacy Center update, Meredith Pipli and Kelly Sisk.
Her name was a lot easier to find. I understand that.
I'm sorry.
Just call me Meredith. Usually that's what happens. My name is Meredith Pipli. I'm the executive director at Crossroads, and this is, would you introduce yourself?
I'm Kelly Sisk. I'm the board chair.
So we're going to give you a little bit of an update. Some of you may remember that in June of 2022, this board approved $100,000 to start the Child Advocacy Center here in Person County. So I was going to give you a little bit of update of where we're at, and I think we're pretty proud of where we're at. Took a lot longer than I thought. My staff thinks I move a little faster than I should, so that could be why, too. So in 2022, we did receive the funding from Person County Commissioners. Again, there is no upfront money to start a Child Advocacy Center in North Carolina. You do have to receive some sort of funding. As far as I know, in this, this gift to the Crossroads was the largest county support in the state history of starting a Child Advocacy Center. Nobody has told me otherwise. The Child Advocacy Centers of North Carolina cannot find any gift that was bigger than this or this funding, and so that's, we're pretty proud of that money, and we hold it, we cherish it every day. In 2022, we began conversations about the location of the CAC, Child Advocacy Center, and conversations with the Child Advocacy Centers of North Carolina about provisional accreditation. So the accreditation is very important because that's where your future funding comes from. And if you don't hit provisional funding, then you don't, the Child Advocacy Center doesn't continue. So I would have had to come back and ask you for more money, and I'm pretty sure the contract said a one-time, not gift, I don't want to keep calling it a gift, but one-time funding allocation. And so we were very serious about this provisional accreditation. The problem with the provisional accreditation is that the Board of CACNC, Child Advocacy Centers of North Carolina, met in September of 2022 to determine funding starting in July of 2023. So we had approximately, I think Ronnie and I decided, I think we had 45 days, to get this at least to a provisional accreditation. And I'll explain a little bit about what provisional accreditation means and what standards we had to meet. So we signed the lease for the Person County location at 1011 North Main Street in Roxborough, and we at that point began renovation to the center. And in August of '22 is when we actually applied for our business permit for the city of Roxborough. I'll explain that in a minute. In September 2022, we did receive provisional accreditation through CACNC. There were six centers across the state of North Carolina that applied. Only two received provisional accreditation, and we were one of them. In October of 2022, received facilities grant from the North Carolina Human Trafficking Commission to do a little bit more upgrading to the facility itself. It was an older house. It was, we believe it was built in the 1950s. And so there were two things that were really on our mind at that point. We needed to add more gravel to the driveway because we are, although we are not residential, obviously, but we have approximately one and a half cars there on a regular basis. And so we did want to improve and expand the driveway a little bit. And windows, we believe that the windows are original to the house. And so that was also one of the funding grants that we received for Crossroads. In December of 2022, we did hire an advocate, and we finally received our business permit. Took a little bit longer than we thought. The Department of Transportation was a little sticky about what they wanted us to do. And so because of the road that we're on, they wanted specific things from us, and so we finally were able to achieve that in December of 2022. So that did push our timeline back a little bit on when we wanted to actually start services at the center. February 1st is finally when we were ready to begin services full-time in Person County. We were serving children of Person County before that. I want to make that clear. We were serving them either at our Caswell location, or Yanceville location, or our Burlington location. So we did have clients still coming through from Person County. We just weren't able to serve them in this center until that business permit went through. I didn't want to do anything illegally. I have April question mark because we hadn't figured out the date yet, but our open house for the center will be April 4th, and I believe you all... And I believe you all did receive invitation. If not, I can certainly send it to Brenda. So what does it mean to be accredited as a child advocacy center? And I think in your packets, I believe, I gave you this handout here. So this is national accreditation by the National Children's Advoc, or National Children's Alliance. And you've got to have ten standards of accreditation to reach national standards. I don't know what happened to my thing. So the biggest, there's six of them that had to have been met within those forty-five days. The biggest one was the multidisciplinary team. And I believe you do also have the protocol in front of you as well. It's a twenty, thirty-page document and you can see who it has to be signed by. It has to be signed by all law enforcement divisions in the county, it has to be signed by DSS, it has to be signed by the DA's office and a few other community partners as well. So that is it, that's how we function as a CAC. So that is necessary. We have to have forensic interviewing. So that means the child has to be able to come onsite and be interviewed, that is recorded, that is evidence in a case. So we have to have that. We have to have child medical evaluations. Those are done at our office in Burlington. We have to have advocacy. We hired an advocate, therefore we qualify for that. We don't have to have mental health, but we do have mental health here in Person County for Crossroads. We serve children at our highest levels of trauma. These are not necessarily normal cases of trauma. These are highly difficult cases of trauma to respond to. And so our therapists are particularly trained to do that type of trauma therapy. We have to review these cases. We review cases in order to make sure that everybody is accountable for the actions that they are being held to the standards of. So for example, we question law, I mean Kelly, unfortunately for her, is also my board chair, but also worked for the Burlington Police Department. And there are times when we have to look over cases and make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing. That's case review. Case tracking, we have a system in place that case tracks all of our cases at Crossroads. We have to have capacity to do this work. My staff might argue that, but I swear we have capacity. We also have to have a child-focused setting. That means when a child enters our setting, they have to feel as though it's a welcoming environment. And I know these ten, these ten standards seem mundane at times, but these are the important standards that we have to operate a child advocacy center. Happy to say today, we only needed six to pass for provisional. I could venture to guess that if we apply for national accreditation today, the Crossroads, Person County location was most likely probably succeed in that. Now, we have to wait two years, unfortunately, they make us wait two years. I would love to put that application in tomorrow, but they won't let me. And so we will apply for national accreditation in two years. So what, there they are, I don't, apparently I'm not very good at PowerPoint. So this was what the office in Roxborough looked like when we took possession of this particular, this little house here. You can see there a little bit of work needed to be done. We have a fantastic landlord that worked with us. He didn't like all of my demands, but I don't think he ever said no to me. So this is what the center looks like today. As you see from the front and the back of the house, we have added gravel, those top two pictures. If you look from this right, the center or the front of the house, all the way to the right is that office that you see in the, I guess it would be the top right corner of your sheet. Down below that, that's a kid room. Again, we have to be child-friendly. The one right in the middle is your in-frenetic interview room, which that room has a camera that connects to the boardroom, which is in your bottom right corner, with that television that you see there, that is a direct connection. And at that table sits DSS, law enforcement, the DA's office, and anybody else needs to watch that video of that child. The middle to the right is a, is an extra room at this point. We use it as an intake space. We decided, given those were oak floors and not pine floors, we decided to keep those in place. And then your bottom left is the lobby, again, child-friendly. And then that middle bottom is the kitchen. So we are using every bit of that thirteen hundred square feet that we have. So our current funding, as you know, the Person County Commissioners, obviously $100,000. The Rotary Club of Roxborough has given us $6,000. Private donation of $3,000. And the Concord Christian Church has also given us $1,000. So $110,000 current funding as of right now, which does not include the grant that we received, but a little over $10,000 from the Human Trafficking Commission. These are current expenses as of the 31st. We anticipate, I believe, the contract ends on the twenty, in 2024. So we anticipate about sixty-five to seventy percent of the funding to be spent in the first year, carrying over into the second year, about thirty to thirty-five percent of funding. So as of right now, this is what our facilities grant funding looks like. We got $10,132.52 from the Human Trafficking Commission. Two thousand of that went to gravel. I didn't realize windows were so expensive. Yeah, I heard somebody say, oh, yeah. Seventy-eight hundred went to windows. Given my elect, my heat bill, I'm putting new windows in. Just, I've decided all my heat's gone out of that. My finance person just told me that today. And about $257 in window treatments. As you can imagine, sometimes when we have these cases, people like to peek inside and see what we're doing. We don't want them to do that. So we have window treatments that are on that list as well. So you're probably worried about how we're going to sustain this, because I promised you that we would probably be able to sustain this. So what it means, we've got two sources of funding that are now, because of our accreditation as provisional, we don't have to fight for this essentially, we just have to keep doing our jobs. So the Child Advocacy Centers of North Carolina will allocate $56,000 to us July 1st to June 30th. If we were nationally accredited, that pot of money is $134,000. And we can't do that for two years. This money comes from the state of North Carolina. It's allocated through the Child Advocacy Center of North Carolina. The second pot of money, which will start October 1st through September 30th, is approximately $70,000 for two years, $35,000 per year. That's the Governor, North Carolina Governor's Crime Commission. That is the Victims of Crime Act funding. And if you know anything about the Victims of Crime Act funding, it is at its lowest level than it has been in probably thirty years. So I anticipate that only going up. So we're fine for the next couple of years, we should be fine. The state of North Carolina, in the last couple of years, put seventeen, twelve million dollars into child advocacy centers across the state, which is that first pot of money, which has allowed us to sustain when the Governor's Crime Commission funding fell. So we've been sustained through that. So this is money, again, if we keep doing our job, this money, we don't have to, this isn't money that is competitive, this is what we classify as non-competitive funding. Anything you want to add? I feel like I'm talking a little. Anybody have any questions for me?
I just have one comment. Gordon, if you don't mind. I just want to say, this is what I like to see when the county gives money to an organization, is to see what's, what we're getting for that money, so to speak. And I look at this, and so anyone ever questions, you know, the money that we gave to get this going, all they got to do is look at these pictures. And, and also the work that you've put in to where you don't really have to come back to us and ask for anymore as we see it. And I think you guys are doing a great job, great calls, and I just appreciate everything out there.
I do want to say, one of the biggest expenses that may be questioned, and I just want to put it out there now, is we spent about $14,000 in equipment. So probably, that's a lot of money on equipment. Well, this is what we classify as recording equipment, and it has to be purchased by a specific company, because when you go into court and you're fighting this, they're going to ask, well, who controls your equipment? Who is that company? What did, what did defense attorneys try to come up with all kinds of things? And so that equipment was either going to cost us $14,000 upfront or over the next five years, $5,000 a year. I'm a finance person, so I figured maybe the $14,000 would be best if we had the money. And so we went ahead and made the purchase. So that equipment is ours in perpetuity, and so we decided to replace it. We've had ours in Alamance for at least the last five or six years, with no intention at this point in replacing it, there's nothing wrong with it. I also want to kind of talk a little bit, very briefly, about our first case. Our first case in Person County was, I've been at Crossroads for three years now, probably the most complicated case I've ever seen. It did lead to the rest of two individuals out of Monroe, North Carolina. And the rest of the case has been turned over to the State Bureau of Investigation. And the Monroe Police Department called us at Crossroads and said, we have a victim in Person County. We need to do a forensic interview. And my staff was able to say, would you like to do it in Roxborough? That was amazing to us. And so to be able to say that and not have that victim come all the way down to Burlington or over to Yanceville, we did that here. And you all did that here. And we're very proud of that. So the State Bureau of Investigation, at this point, has decided they do not need to talk to this victim because the evidence that was collected is enough for them to most likely prosecute fifteen additional individuals. So that's, that's what happens here. And that's what happens at the CAC. Yeah, it was, happened to be a human trafficking case, yes. Thank you again for your support.
Excuse me, I can only echo what Commissioner Samson has already said, but you, you people are doing what you said you were going to do. And to have that facility here in Person County is extremely important. We can't imagine some of the horrific conditions, most of us can't, you guys can because you see it and know it, what happens to our children. And if I understand right, there's, timing is extremely important in these cases. So time to get a child to a facility, out of town, out of county, and I have heard stories even as far away as Asheville, long way. By that time, the child probably doesn't feel comfortable in talking about what they've been subjected to. So being here, being ready to serve, I compliment you on that. And I think, on behalf of the commissioners, I could say, money well spent and job well done.
Thank you.
So continue your efforts, God bless.
It's unfortunate that we have to be here, but we're happy to be here.
Very unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven on the agenda is Person County Schools' funding request. Andrew Cathy.
Good evening. You last met with the, jointly with the Board of Education in mid-February, and then at our annual budget retreat, we again discussed the school system's request. That is summarized in your agenda packet. As you know, they are, have currently gotten underway to plan for a project at Person High School. Overall, they're asking for funding to be able to address ADA and safety needs at schools throughout the school system. The total request, which we have, as a board, been discussing for a length of time, is $87 million. That would involve issuing debt in three different tranches over the course of several years. You have options outlined in your agenda packet. Option one would fund the Person High School project. Option two would allow up to $36 million of funding towards the request without a tax increase. Option three could be funded with a quarter cent property tax increase. And that would fund just over $38 million of the school system's request. And with a half cent increase on the property tax, then the, the full request could be funded. The school system also in October presented information to you requesting some new construction, so new construction of an elementary school that would then result in being able to close a couple of the schools that are older and need more maintenance and have less students attending those schools, and also build out an addition at Stories Creek. So that full project amounts to $89 million. So you do have several options now that are before you to consider. We are asking that the board make a decision to commit to one of the options if you so choose to do that moving forward. Making that decision tonight would enable the school system to continue with their planning efforts and keep the county on track with all the steps that we need to do in order to issue debt later this year. And we're looking at the, I believe it's the October timeframe, there is a calendar included in your agenda packet. But there are many steps that we need to do. And one of the first ones is for the school system to be able to put out requests for the construction bids. And those need to be out and advertised in May to stay on track with being able to issue the debt in October. So that is why a decision is now on the table for moving forward. If the board does choose to fund one of these options, then county staff will prepare a resolution for your consideration outlining that decision for you to approve at the next meeting on March 20th. But in the meantime, we can start taking the steps that we need to do as a county to prepare for financing, and the school system can work with their architects to bring them back into the project to proceed with their planning efforts. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have. And we do have Dr. Peterson here from the school system, who I'm sure would also be available to answer questions.
Okay, and board member comments, questions? I didn't quite get your last couple of sentences, could you repeat that, please?
So I said I would be glad to answer any questions, and Dr. Peterson, okay. Let me think. Just that we were asking you to make a decision tonight on whether or not to fund one of the options that has been presented to you. That way, the county can move forward with developing, putting together a resolution that would formally confirm that decision and also proceed with the next steps that we need to take to prepare for financing, for issuing debt in October. You have a calendar in your agenda packet that outlines many steps that have to be followed. Some are actions that we, as a county, need to take, others are actions that the school system needs to take. So with a decision by the board and a commitment to moving forward with funding one of these options, then the school system is able to reengage their architect so that they can continue with that process in order to advertise bids for construction in May. That's the next deadline that they need to be able to make in this process.
What you said, I want to be clear on that. Thank you.
And again, the options one, two, three, either one of those, the, that is for ADA and safety, is that correct?
One through four are all for ADA, safety, deferred maintenance.
This includes the windows?
It does not include that windows project that's been discussed at the high school. There is an attachment in your agenda packet that provides details for what would be addressed at various locations.
And going forward, if we were to go the route of bonds, how, sort of explain how this would tie in and flow to a bond referendum?
Sure. So if the board wanted to schedule a bond referendum, you would need to make that decision in about a year so that we would have time to prepare for a bond referendum during the November 2024, no, yes, 2024 general election. And that gives you some time to think through what that would look like, make a decision about how to move forward, and then we would follow all the steps associated with that process to ensure that information is shared publicly and that voters are prepared for that decision in November of '24.
Two entirely different things here.
Yes.
Right.
Initially, it's making a decision about whether or not to move forward with one of the options so that the school system can proceed with the Person High School project and for, make plans for any of the other projects that the board decides to go ahead and commit funding to at this time.
So again, if we're looking at option five, new school, where as far as a bond referendum, we're looking about a year out to get that going or to get the, as a, as a commissioner board to approve it and get it going?
A decision would need to be made within the next year in order to meet the timeframes for a bond referendum.
Well, I know some of these items to me are something that can't be put off, in my opinion, from ADA and safety, so me, you know, one, two, or three.
So, just, just to clarify, so you have your median value. So, if you owe, you own a hundred fifty thousand dollar property in Person County, the impact of three, you would be paying three dollars and sixty-seven cents more in the tax bill, is that correct?
In the annual tax bill, yes.
And if you own a million dollar property, you'd be paying twenty-five dollars more, close to it, annually.
And, and the other thing, just to remind you that is a consideration, is the county's debt capacity. So, we've talked about that, and the, this decision influences that going forward. I just want to remind you of that as well. But yes, the, the impact there in your chart does show the, the tax bill for the median home value.
Manager Kathy? From my, looking at the chart, number one, and knowing where we stand financially, if we go over to number three, option number three, we're looking at going, we're gonna have to borrow some money somewhere to, to do all these other projects that we have planned.
That, that will, so if you were to go with option three, then based on our current debt capacity, in order to do any of the other large projects that would need to be debt financed, we would have to identify other revenue sources. So, that would, could possibly mean increasing taxes if we weren't able to secure grant funding for projects. Or we will also most likely recognize growth over time in our tax base and our, our sales taxes. So, each year, we have to reevaluate the debt model. So, you know, it's quite possible that our debt capacity will increase from year to year. And if we are able to put excess fund balance into our capital investment fund, then we then have that available as well. But there are no guarantees. So, that is the trend that we've seen, but we do have to keep in mind that there are no guarantees. That's a year-to-year evaluation, and there are unknowns out there that could impact revenues negatively rather than positively.
When was the last time this county had to use a debt capacity for, for the school system funding?
Amy's here, that's why. And I did, our finance director, Amy, we're in focus here too to answer questions.
Maybe two thousand and sixteen, maybe? We had some school projects.
That were tied to that, but nothing of this magnitude?
No.
When was the last time in your, we had something of this magnitude?
In nineteen ninety-nine, we did a ten million to build.
Stories Creek.
Stories Creek, and then the year after that, in two thousand, we did another ten million to build Halina.
That was two thousand and ten?
Ninety-nine and two thousand.
Yeah, two thousand. So, it's been twenty-three years since we've.
And it shows with the request because this funding is for ADA compliance. It's really not even, like we said earlier, windows aren't included in, in the high school project. We're certainly between a rock and a hard spot, but our children are our most precious commodity. And I would hate to see this board continue to ignore those needs by not attempting to go forward with, with these projects and get these buildings in the condition they need to be in because safety and compliance with laws and rules and regulations are, you know, a mandate that we, that we deal with. So, it's sad that we're at this point, but, but we're at that intersection and we need to make a decision on it. And debt, excuse me, and Amy, you have researched this. I know we've talked about it before. So, these options are pretty doable?
Yes, I mean, that's, that's one reason why we got the, the, put the debt model into place to, to see what we could do, what capacity we did have, and the debt model, this is the results from the debt model.
Right, exactly.
Very confident in, in those options.
Yes, sir.
Would any of the funds, I can understand option one and two. Would any of the options, would any, any of the funds in option three go, go towards school security and safety?
I thought it'd probably be best for Dr. Peterson to.
Sure.
What, what do they have in their packet? Do they have the outline from twenty-one?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, if you go with option three, there will be several items that pertain to safety and ADA that would not be funded. So, we would have to, the school system would have to prioritize what safety and ADA issues we have. A lot of the state, safety stuff that we're addressing is doors, windows inside the school that can cause harm if broken, because now they're asking for shattered glass. But it doesn't do anything in terms of external windows. This is all internal. It addresses security vestiges. I think I had Mr. Powell and Mr. Thomas with me at, at Person High School. Person High School is a great example of what we have inside the county. Outside of Halina and Stories Creek, to lock a door, you got to physically have a key, got to have a key. What we're, what's part of the safety piece is, is the locking mechanisms where it's just a push button. So, for God fearing reasons, let's say we have a shooting on campus, instead of a teacher having to find a key, lock the door, it's a push-button key, it's a locking mechanism, and then the door is automatically locked. A lot of the ADA issue is regress issues. Students in wheelchairs, students with walking implement, implements that is needed for them to get to and from. They're having to go outside a building with no canopies, walking in the rain just to get to cafeterias, just to eat or to go to EE. It will address those particular elements. But in terms of windows, none of that is involved with it. And none of the deferred maintenance that was identified in the two thousand and seventeen facility audit would be fixed under this.
You're talking about option three, correct?
Option three or four, none of the deferred maintenance would be addressed at all. It would be all safety and ADA. So, you know, the hundred, I think in two thousand and seventeen, it was a hundred and twenty-one million in deferred maintenance needs. So, none of that would be addressed. Now, what the school board has done, we received roughly twelve point seven, twelve point eight million in COVID money. I don't know what y'all call it. We call it ESAR. But to address all the heating and air issues in our school, the school board is required to put twenty-five percent of that twelve million into learning loss. But they put the other seventy-five percent, which was eight point one, seven point nine, somewhere around, to address the heating and air deferred maintenance needs. That was a part of the facility audit. And so, that part of the facility audit would be addressed.
Was that county-wide or just for?
That would be county-wide.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. Further questions, comments, thoughts?
I have a question. On the ADA, I know that is, there's a law. And when did that go into effect, and what is the, our situation as far as eventually someone's going to say something about your, your schools are not?
You have very, very, very compassionate parents and very patient parents in Person County. Our county is changing every day with move-ins who are not as patient. A great example is Oak Lane Elementary where we had to move certain grade levels to certain parts of the building because the regress outside of the building only allowed for one. And we had a student that had a wheelchair, and we had to put CIP money towards putting in sidewalks to get them the second access out. It's all about building code. So, when these schools were built in the nineteen fifties, on the nineteen forties blueprint, all this stuff wasn't required. And we have band-aided together. Woodland Elementary is, is another great example. Every classroom at Woodland Elementary has a step up. And so, we've had to build a ramp for every classroom for them to get inside the classroom. And the ramps, to be perfectly honest with you, aren't at the current twelve to one. So, you know, based on your facility plan, you go by different rules, but it's coming. Someone, some can, someone can definitely file a complaint. I gave another good example at Person High School. The, the two main doors in the front of the school, one is by the cafeteria, the other one is at, in the middle of the building per se, where the main entrance is. There's four doors, but there's only one accessibility door that a student with a walking mechanism or in a wheelchair can get out.
Is that one per section?
One per section. And so, those students, we have to have a plan for those students to make sure if we have a fire, this is where you go. Not the quickest way out, but this is where you're going. And God forbid if their aid is incapacitated and you can't get them out.
And how many students do you have at the high school with special needs?
It's about a little over a hundred, because it's a program. And we have a program at, we have every one of our schools have accessibility students. But special needs, we cluster. So, the high school has a special needs program, Southern Middle School has a special needs program, and Stories Creek has the elementary program, along with South.
And what was that number again?
It's a little over a hundred.
And does that include the profoundly handicap?
Yes.
It includes all, okay.
It doesn't include your regular students that have five oh four plans that's also required by federal law, which is adaptability program. Total population, special need population in county is seventeen percent.
And the state funds you for what percentage?
Twelve point seven five.
So, you have to absolve the rest through local funding?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
To, Manager Kathy, I was just, so option five, we're looking, I'm looking at that, and we look at, if you take out the new school, then the actual, to get all the ADA and everything done, that would be about, what, forty-three?
Well, that option five involves some other parts of the plan. And do you want to describe that, the impact that that?
The impact on option five with a new school will enable the school board to start redistricting students. And we would look at, based on the redistricting model that we would get from Oriet, we would look at shutting down two schools. And so, that would save costs on ADA safety side because that money would come off the ADA safety projects. But it would also save about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in operating costs that we would request from you.
And, and there's not a direct comparison there numbers-wise for option five because we have built in additional contingency in option five to finance because the, the numbers are so much higher. We felt like we could put some of the contingency for options one through four in our pay-as-you-go CIP in case it's needed, but weren't wanting to do that with option five because the numbers are so much higher. We felt like it would be best to go ahead and finance the contingency under that, the full fifteen percent contingency under that option.
I'm not hearing anything. You gotta talk to me.
Well, no one wants to raise taxes. I mean, that's obvious. But we're at a rock and hard place, and we need to do something. I mean, it's not a wish list. This is, you've heard him. We need to do something now. How long has this been pushed off? For a while? In my eyes, I think option three, that would get them, that would get the ball rolling for them. It's a very small increase, but that's just my opinion.
Something is better than nothing.
Yeah.
Difference between option three and four to the taxpayer, what was that number you had there?
It was.
For a year, a while ago?
It's seven dollars and thirty-five cents per one hundred and forty-six thousand tax value.
Versus three.
Three dollars and sixty-seven cents.
So, you can do option four at that rate at seven dollars and thirty-five cents. Well, Commissioner Thomas has said nobody wants to increase taxes. That's a given. But his question is good too. How long can we put this off? Longer than I can remember. And, and it just keeps compounding every year. It doesn't get any better. It's not gonna fix itself. So, the onus is on this board where others have pushed to decide and ignored it. Certainly open to a motion here. Make a motion to u, utilize option four? Motion on the floor to approve option four. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just, when I look at, I mean, we're talking about raising taxes, and this is, this is just for the school. I don't know that we, when our budget session is over for the, for the following year, you know, I hope that we don't have to raise taxes on that because then that noun is increasing the taxes more so than just, whether you say fifty cents or whatever. And that's, that's what makes this tough is that you, we, I don't know what our budget's going to be and what position we're going to be in, and if we're going to have to look at raising taxes to meet our, to meet our budget, you know, our demands. And so, so it makes it tough for, for me to sit here and say, oh, yes, I'd go with, you know, four. And not really sure I'm going to be, come budget time saying, oh, yeah, we got to raise taxes. I'm voting for more tax increase. That's, that's the thing that concerns me a little bit. But I do think we need to do something, and I'm not sure four is it. I was, I was leaning towards three.
On a side note, Commissioner Sims, I would like to note that the longer you wait, year after year, price is considerably higher.
I got that. I'm more on the side of option three on that. That, I guess that would get the ball rolling, and we don't know what uncertainty that we're going to have to deal with our debt capacity. You know, we know in option three, we are going to have to borrow some, go into our debt capacity. And this, you know, still a lot of unknowns, but I, I feel option three would get the ball rolling.
Okay, we have one motion on the floor for option four. Are you making a substitute motion?
I'll make a substitute motion for option three.
Other comments, questions? Does it matter which we do first?
The, the substitute motion, I believe, takes precedence.
Okay, we, the substitute motion wants to go with option three?
Correct.
Hold in favor of option three, say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed?
Aye.
So, the option, the other motion is moved forward.
Right.
Thank you.
And I fully understand where Commissioner Palmer's coming from and uh, you know.
I'm just, I, I see it in, in the construction field.
I understand.
You see it when people come borrowing money from you.
I understand.
But, you know, at least we're starting somewhere.
Absolutely.
That's bottom line. We're starting somewhere. Okay, you're laying square with you. Ready to go? Item number eight, on agenda, this Person County Museum of History Fiscal Year Funding Request. Manager Kathy.
Okay. This is a request for mid-year funding from the Person County Museum of History. You did receive a presentation from the museum's executive director, Carrie Curry, at your budget retreat. She is here tonight, um, so I'm sure she'll be able to answer any questions if you do have those for her. This is to bring this request back to you for a decision after having some time um, to think about the request. There is a summary in your agenda packet as to what this twenty thousand dollar funding request would go towards. Seven thousand dollars towards the Long Woody House Development Phase One. Three thousand towards safety measures and campus needs Phase One. Twelve hundred and fifty to campus sign updates Phase One. And eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars of that total will go towards recurring operational expenses. We did prepare an agreement. In order for the county to give funding to a nonprofit, we do need to enter into an agreement that would outline the expectations for the use of those funds. So there is an draft agreement. You were given a revised version um, from what you originally saw in your agenda packet. And you have a hard copy in front of you um, with some tracked changes following um, input from the museum as well as review from our county attorney. The museum also prepared an addendum to that agreement or an appendix which goes into more detail about how the funding would be used in this fiscal year. So I will be glad to answer any questions you may have. And again, Mrs. Curry is here as well.
So it's my understanding that this is agreement only through um, the fiscal year, null and void after June thirtieth of this year?
That's right. Um, part of the discussion has also been that they, and that's in the um, agenda abstract as well, that they do intend to ask for forty thousand dollars of funding in fiscal year twenty-four to be considered during our budget process. But this decision in front of you today is the twenty thousand in this.
Would you have to go through another agreement such as this if the, uh, if the board so does deserve?
Yes.
And that would be discussed at the budget?
Yes.
If, if, if I'm not mistaken, right now, the county uh, as far as their utilities, maintenance, service, maintenance contracts, the county is paying forty-seven thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what we have budgeted in the current fiscal year.
So we're paying forty-seven thousand and if we agree to this, twenty thousand. Uh, I just want people to understand that sixty-seven thousand dollars we're putting towards uh, the museum at, at this time till, till.
Right, and there are capital, larger capital expenses from time to time that we do invest in the buildings. The buildings are county owned. So we are responsible for the repairs and the improvements of the exterior of all of the buildings. But this uh, annual budget operationally is um, for those repairs, um, maintenance contracts and utilities is forty-seven thousand dollars currently.
Well, I just, I just will say, as I, Child Advocacy, Advocacy Board was here uh, talking, when I look at uh, whenever we put money into a nonprofit or into an organization like this, certainly I wanna see progress. I wanna see results. So certainly when we do this and as we go forth, that's one of the things that I would be certainly want to look at to see, um, be able to see the improvement, something visual. Uh, cause I think that's what people look at when they say, okay, you put money towards this, what did we? If you don't see anything, it's like, where did the money go? But if you actually see progress and you see things happening to out there with the museum, it will certainly make a difference. And uh, that's what I would, I mean, again, it's just a thing I would like to see and, and we'll look at that down the road and see where we, see what is accomplished.
Okay, we did have a revised um, agreement. Is there anything that you might like to add about that?
Only as the county manager said, um, that I reviewed the agreement and um, I found most of the requested changes um, acceptable from a legal standpoint. There was one provision at the end of paragraph four that I thought needed to remain as originally drafted. So that was my recommendation. And I would point out that this agreement is much like the written agreement that the county entered into with respect to the one hundred thousand dollar appropriation to cross roads. It has, for example, the same requirement uh, that the organization report back to the board, in this case in August of uh, this year, about the use of the money.
This is a, is a one-time commitment uh, to the museum.
Mr. Chairman, I ask this board for permission to recuse myself from this vote.
And that was due because of your wife's role?
Because she is a board member.
Yeah, and, and that's the law.
Receives no compensation, but I feel it was totally appropriate for me to recuse myself.
No law does allow that if the board sees fit, has, if the board has no objection.
Anyone have objection?
No.
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 I would like to make a motion, if I can, that we uh, give twenty thousand dollars to the museum funding for uh, the list of improvements that they've listed here uh, on this uh, agenda abstract.
Okay, you have a motion on the floor, further discussion? Sorry.
And to approve the agreement.
I just said agreement. Oh, you wanna include that or make it separate? I was thinking separate, but I'm okay either way. All right, all right. All in favor of the uh, motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. Now, the agreement, the revised and updated uh, Museum of History agreement. We have a motion to approve this with its latest revision.
So moved. I make the motion.
Any further discussion? You're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Okay, item number nine, Charters of Freedom. It's Kathy.
Okay. So the board has also had um, this particular project uh, on your plate for discussion a few different times. We did last uh, talk briefly about it during the budget retreat. In your agenda packet, um, what we did was just kind of devise three different options so you could look at different ways of approaching this particular um, project through the use of contractors, staff, and volunteers. There's one option that's fully contractor, um, accomplished through contractors. The, the price tag associated with that and all the various components is forty-one thousand five hundred. If you look at option two, then we would be utilizing staff and volunteers. Again, I've got zero there for county expenses, but we've estimated the staff time to have a value of about fourteen hundred dollars um, to supplement volunteer effort. Um, and then we would plan for um, seeking out and receiving donations of supplies towards that project. May still utilize some contractor um, work. Electricity donated um, that labor and materials. And then the flagpole option, um, we did a lower cost option here of building a flagpole from a reused light pole at the cost of two thousand five hundred dollars, which is less expensive than a brand new flagpole. Option three, it says, I mean, okay, we'll do what we can, um, you know, with, with contractors um, and, or not contractors, but staff and volunteers. We may not be able to accomplish everything on that list, but we could seek out um, donations. So another thing that's not specifically spelled out here that you may want to consider is we have this, we do have a line item in the fiscal year um, twenty-three budget, which is uh, our undesignated contingency. Prior to tonight, that amount was twenty-four thousand five oh three. But your decision to fund the museum's requests at twenty thousand dollars does drop the balance in that line item to four thousand five hundred and three. So if you would like to allocate that remaining balance towards the Charters of Freedom project, that does give county staff a budget to work with. I would recommend that John Hill and our Recreation Arts and Parks Department be designated as the point of contact for this project. And if we were to establish that budget, then he could move forward um, with, working with the board members and other uh, willing volunteers in the community to start um, progressing on this project. With the first step being the site preparation um, and clearing. And then um, work with Charters of Freedom to install the settings. And then approach the uh, the construction, the concrete, making the site accessible again. And then determining what amount of funding remains for other aspects such as landscaping, light pole, electricity.
So we could decide on using, what was that, forty-five hundred dollars?
Four thousand five hundred, yes, and three dollars, yes.
And with all those listed entities there now for the project, if say, for instance, someone wanted to uh, go out to the community and seek donations, for instance, concrete, we could work with you and John to allow us to do that individually or how would you?
Sure, I would say, um, and, and I've heard interest from board members in um, you know, getting some of those donations. So um, you could certainly work with John on um, organizing those aspects of the project. You know, even if it were just an initial, a board member makes contact and makes the request, then John can take it from there um, to, to carry out those steps of the project.
And also, Chairman Powell, we can do this in increments. Do the concrete pad, have them install, come back with a light pole. Come back with the like, power to the lights, to the, what do you call them, the frames, I guess. For the Charters of Freedom.
The displays.
Yeah, I mean, we can do this in, in increments. We'll have to do all this at one time.
So which option are you suggesting?
Well, start out with the forty-five hundred dollars to get the ball rolling. Get up with John and um, cause I'm on his board, recreation board. I can talk with him at our next meeting. Of course, I can go to his office and talk with him, see how we could proceed to gain donations, to gain contractors to help us. I'm willing to help myself. I'm willing to write a two thousand dollar check tonight. Y'all didn't hear me say that how many times?
I've heard it.
Tonight. You got a credit card machine.
All right, so you wanna de- designate the remainder of the contingency?
Yes, sir.
To go towards uh, a preliminary budget for, for this project? And I'm, when I'm hearing option three, which is to gather information to see what donations can be done increments at a time?
Right.
Okay.
Option three is all zeros, that's good. We need a motion to um, to use that forty-five hundred dollars toward the project.
And in, in your motion, please um, approve the location for the Charters of Free, Freedom Project at Hut Sandsbury and designate um, John as the, or approve the letter of intent. Cause we'll have to have you as the chairman sign.
We're gonna need all three in one motion?
Yeah.
So we'll need a motion to approve the funding as well as John Hill. As the contact person and what was the third one?
The location.
Location.
And the, uh, yes.
The location is at Hut Sandsbury.
And approve the letter of intent.
The letter of intent, yes.
Do we have a, have a motion for anyone?
So moved.
Have a motion to approve uh, the items as listed there, those four. And uh, further discussion? You're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. That is mine and not yours.
Yes, sir.
Maybe a little bit of an update or a question. The second round of opioid funding, do we need to do a resolution for that?
So that was on the consent agenda and you did approve that. So we are now authorized to sign off on that prior to the April deadline.
And uh, from a public interest standpoint, Duke Energy is having a public hearing March thirteenth. Is it six or seven? I had I think it's seven, what time is it?
It's seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, at the courthouse.
Superior Court, Superior Court.
All right, at the courthouse, so it's March thirteenth, seven, seven o'clock. Duke Energy uh, related to a uh, rate hike, so you wanna put that on your, on your radar. And Madam Clerk, could you uh, get us together some dates related to the upcoming budget work sessions so we can start putting those on our calendar? I know we've got some some, some fun time coming. This is severe weather, preparedness week. So uh, get yourself ready for severe weather, especially in the uh, upcoming summer season. And I, I won't go back to my joke earlier to um, uh, Manager Kathy, but March is designated as Women's History Month to acknowledge the importance of women uh, in our country and certainly right here in Person County. So you ladies that are in the room, be the first to be complimenting for your service to Person County. And, and when you see someone in that capacity, give them a handshake or a hug and thank a woman for what they do for us in Person County. I have nothing further. Uh, Manager Kathy?
I do not have anything to add tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Sims?
Yeah, I just wanna thank everyone who came out tonight to give a presentation. And um, also, I'm looking forward to seeing what the museum is gonna do for us uh, down the road. And I'm excited about that. So um, very, very tough, a lot, a lot of tough decisions made by us tonight. But uh, the whole thing is let's move forward, taking steps forward and let's move forward, so.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Palmer?
I follow up with Commissioner Sam's uh, words. By and large, I agree one hundred percent and um, thankful for you guys for coming out tonight to show your interest and to share your concerns. And we look forward to moving forward.
Commissioner Perry, you?
Uh, no report.
Commissioner Thomas?
I would just like to thank Dr. Peterson for your time, uh, that you spent with me, giving me a full understanding about the school needs. We had to make a tough decision and we, I mean, I think we made a, a good decision. You have a lot of work ahead of you, um, but we're proud of you, uh, you're a great superintendent and we're lucky to have you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we are going into closed session, which was added to the agenda. The motion to end it into closed session.
So moved.
Those permitted to attend, County Attorney Ellis Henkens, County Manager Catherine Kathy, and Clerk to the Board Brenda Reeves.
Chairman, I also would suggest that the planning director who just left uh, included.
Yeah, I did.
Can you give me one more please?
I did not ask. See, I'll see if I catch you.
Hey, you don't run away either. Thank y'all. We really do appreciate it a lot.
Thank you very much.
And made it very clear and, um, appreciate it.